Students have now completed their first full rotation in the eight-day cycle, which means, starting tomorrow, the ad-drop period will start where students will be able to talk to their guidance counselors about any needed changes to their schedule. Summer reading will be held next Thursday, September nineteenth. Students have chosen a book selection off of the summer reading list and will meet with their designated teacher that day. Today, students began training on a new program called My Flex Learning. This will continue next week during study halls, and with this program, students can find interventions or check into the library during their study periods. Fall sports are in full swing now. Yesterday, cross-country began their season at Needham. Swimming and diving had a meet against Marshfield, and golf had a match against Newton-North. Today, girls soccer, volleyball, and field hockey traveled to Weymouth, and boys soccer hosted Weymouth at home. On Friday, the football team will once again play at four at home against Natick. Auditions for the Fall Musical took place this past Monday and Wednesday. Rehearsals will begin on Monday for those students involved in the musical. Student council ballots are out for the freshmen, and they are available on Miss Mack's tour. They're due Monday, September sixteenth, and elections will take place on September eighteenth through the twentieth. Best Buddies will be holding their first meeting on October seventeenth. Members of the club will also be participating in the Best Buddies friendship walk on Sunday, September twenty-second, in Pawtucket, Rhode Island. The first meeting for the Film Festival will be held on Thursday, September nineteenth, in Mr. Allen's Room. It is open to any student with an interest in the Film Fest or helping with Mrs. O'Malley to prepare the red carpet. Green Team also held their first meeting on Tuesday. Any students that missed the informational meeting can contact Nathan Schneider, or are welcome to attend the next meeting on Monday. Tomorrow will be the final day for students to submit a Pride t-shirt design. This competition will be chosen by the Career and Ed for winner, and these shirts will be sold at the school store. The winner will also receive two copies of their t-shirt. Back-to-school night is September twenty-sixth, seven PM to eight fifty PM. Parents will be able to come to the school, meet their children's teacher, and get an overview of all their classes throughout this night. Thank you.
Great job. Thanks, Darcy.
Thank you so much.
There's so much going on, and it's great to hear somebody with a comprehensive look at it, so thank you. We appreciate it.
The fall is a really busy but exciting time.
Yeah, you can tell. And it's good for it to be publicized, so thanks for joining us. You're welcome to stay for as long as you can, but you use your judgment.
I have a lot of homework.
That's the best excuse we could hear.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so our next order of business has to do with the opening of school. Dr. Goff?
Sure. So the building principals are going to provide a brief presentation to the school committee relative to the successful opening of school. So why don't we start with the high school this year?
Our opening of school at the high school this year went very smoothly. It's the second year of our new eight-period schedule, which is now memorialized in the new contract. I want to thank the school committee and the WTA for recognizing the importance of this new schedule. I'd also like to thank everyone, especially the custodial staff and DPW, who worked tirelessly to get the school ready for the students and staff. We have two new collaboration rooms in the media center, fresh paint in the fitness center, and some classrooms, air conditioning in the career and ed rooms. Our front steps have been fixed. We have a new surface on the tennis courts and new turf on Turco Field, so a lot of work was done this summer. The day before school started, we invited our incoming freshman students to attend our freshman orientation. About ninety-eight percent of the freshman class attended. It's always a positive experience for the freshmen, as it gives them the run of the school without the upperclassmen there. This is the second year of our one-to-one Chromebook initiative for every student. The introduction of this initiative has positively changed how teachers conduct their classes. Again, I want to thank you all for your support of this program. We've twelve new staff members and six new ESPs in the building to replace staff who have retired, resigned, or happened to be on leave. We've been very fortunate in hiring some of the best educators in the business, and we look forward to building strong professional relationships with them this school year. We're actively promoting our Pride core values this year. Pride stands for positivity, respect, integrity, drive, and empathy. Students and staff have responded very positively, and this month's Pride goal is positivity. The staff hand out positivity tickets to students who are displaying a positive attitude and actions, and a drawing will take place every Friday for students to receive a prize. I'd like to remind the community about our back-to-school night again, as you just heard, on September twenty-sixth. We have a freshman parent orientation from six to six-thirty, and we invite all our parents from seven to nine. The high school PAC is also sponsoring a Pride Parent Social that evening, starting at six PM in the cafeteria. I also want to alert the community that we will be having a visiting team from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, also known as NEASC, from October sixth through the ninth. This is a decennial visit to determine our accreditation status. We're inviting all parents to attend our welcome reception on Sunday, October sixth. We're looking forward to another fabulous school year at the high school, where every student can find personal success and fully enjoy their high school experience. Thank you.
Any comments?
Any questions for Steve or comments? Steve, that Sunday with the NEASC people, do you want school committee members there too?
Yes, you should be receiving an invitation if you haven't already. School committee are invited, and in fact, there is a designated time for you to speak to the visiting committee that day, which I put on that invitation. So in a day or two, if you haven't received it already, you'll receive that invitation.
Sounds like maybe I didn't check my mail today. Have you done the self-study already?
Yes.
Is that, can you give us like a summary of that, or is that like not easy to do?
Well, it's about a hundred and twenty pages long, so.
No, 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 no.
I mean, it has just been given to the NEASC visiting committee chairs today, actually. It was submitted. But it, you know, it looks at various aspects of the school, the curriculum, the instruction, you know, the resources we have for learning. I mean, it goes into seven different standards, and we split the faculty up into seven committees, and they wrote their, each committee wrote their own self-study, determined by their committee.
If it's too extensive, that's okay. I thought there might be, you know, like a three-page summary.
I can send you something.
I'm not trying to create extra work, no. I just thought that that might be part of what happens.
Yeah, I think it would be good for you to have something before they come out anyway. So I will make sure you get something to read through.
Perfect. Thank you.
Stephen, I just wanted to commend you and continuing to do that freshman orientation. I've never had the opportunity to actually go down and see it in action, and I was really impressed with the counselors and the way they were able to, just an important part in the transition process. But I was equally impressed by the amount of upperclassmen who came and just to help out these freshmen. It was unbelievable.
Yeah, and it's their last, it's the last day of their summer vacation. We probably had forty or fifty upperclassmen who came just to help.
Yeah.
And it really is impressive. They recognize how important it is to transition, you know, well into the high school, so.
That's a great job. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, having an incoming freshman, I thought it was a great day, and it was kind of cool to see all the seniors, you know, in the drop-off and high-five all the freshmen when they came in. So I thought that was particularly welcoming, and the rest of the day was really beneficial. So, thank you.
Glad to hear that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, let's continue with the middle schools. Mr. Connor, Mr. Morganweck?
Good evening, everybody. It was another successful start for the middle schools in Walpole. It was full of energy and excitement, and Principal Morganweck and I, along with our respective staff members, welcomed a total of eight-hundred-and-seventy-five students at Byrd and Johnson Middle Schools.
Our year started with our summer sneak peek program, which welcomed two-hundred-and-thirty-four out of our two-hundred-and-ninety-four incoming grade-six students. This certainly helped to make the transition of our newest members of the community smooth and seamless. We also welcomed several new staff members to the middle school ranks, including seven teachers, three new educational support professionals, one new school psychologist, one math coach intervention specialist, one school nurse, and two new assistant principals. They have been, I'm sorry, we have also been fortunate to now have two full-time digital learning coaches at each school, or one at each school, excuse me. They have now shifted their focus, their efforts towards advancing the use of instructional technology in the classrooms and providing support for teachers as they integrate new programs and applications.
We started the year with kickoff assemblies, where we spoke with students about ways to be successful this year. At Byrd Middle School, we encouraged the staff and students to enjoy the journey and to recognize and appreciate the unique gifts, talents, and experiences that we each bring to the learning community, promoting the idea that through sharing our own personal journeys with each other, we can all achieve greater potentials. Our core values played a prominent part in these messages, too. At BMS, they're told to demonstrate kindness, respect, family, perseverance, and honesty. By adhering to these values, students and staff can have a prosperous and productive year at school.
And at JMS, our focus for the year will be on encouragement, empowerment, and engagement for our learners. These elements are essential to creating a safe, positive, and motivating school climate in which every student can flourish. As educators, we believe in the potential of our students and are committed to helping each child recognize that potential in themselves. And to that end, we will work to develop a curriculum that offers increased opportunities for student voice and student choice, and encourages all learners to be active participants in their own educational journey.
So some of the major goals for this year include the growth of our social-emotional learning programs for adolescent learners. Johnson Middle School will continue to implement the strategies developed by their SEL committee, both in classrooms and throughout the school. They will also be expanding SEL programming and offering more opportunities for student leadership in this area. At Byrd Middle School, we're starting our own SEL Steering Committee to explore ways to embed social-emotional learning competencies in our everyday activities.
We will also be exploring ways to enhance instruction in math and reading through the implementation of iReady. This program offers diagnostic assessments, progress monitoring, and personalized learning tools that are designed to promote growth for all learners. Professional development and the effective use of the iReady system is planned for later this month, and baseline diagnostic testing has already started at each school.
Another area that we'll be working together on is providing more community-wide programming for families across the district. As part of our efforts, we will present viewings of the film Screenagers for all students and their parents. Screenagers is a documentary following one family's decision about whether or not to give their twelve-year-old daughter a smartphone. Our students will see the documentary as part of grade-level assemblies, and a public screening for parents and other community members will be held on Thursday, October third, at seven PM in the JMS auditorium. We will also be inviting some of the upper-grade parents from our elementary schools to attend as well.
Principal Connor and I would like to take the opportunity to thank Dr. Goff and Assistant Superintendent Han for their guidance and support as we have worked through our transitions of leadership at both schools. Finally, we would be remiss if we did not recognize our custodial staff and the Walpole DPW. It is no easy task to prepare two aging buildings for over nine-hundred eager students. And during the summer months, both schools had their outdoor play areas repaved with new asphalt. At JMS, the entire blacktop was repainted. It is now a green top, in line for tennis, basketball, pickleball, and four-square activities. A similar project will soon be underway at Byrd. BMS is also in the process of having a swing set installed in the play area, and that playground equipment will greatly benefit the Cooperative Learning Center students. So thank you to all those involved in making those projects happen for our community. We are very grateful for their efforts.
And finally, we're both looking forward to an exciting school year, and want to take this opportunity to publicly confirm that there will be another Johnson versus Byrd faculty basketball game this time. And we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
We were worried about that.
The children are, for sure.
And we're very impressed with your coordinated approach to that. That was seamless. Tough act to follow, elementary. Now, welcome. Are there questions for either Steve or Ed?
Just thank you for your hard work over the summer. I know it's been a transition, but I'm really confident you're going to make a great team and keep moving the middle schools forward. I was, it was nice to see the amount of students that sneak peeked, too. I mean, it just keeps growing.
Awesome.
It's great. Thanks.
Can I also just publicly congratulate Connor Cashman? His daughter was born this morning. Heather Cashman has joined our crew over at Johnson, so congratulations to the family.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thanks for telling us. That's good.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks.
Elementary school next up with Mr. Rosero, Mr. Barner, Mr. Dearborn, and Mr. Bemis.
Good evening. On behalf of the elementary principals, thank you for having us here tonight to share a little bit about the exciting start to the new school year. Across the district and the four elementary schools, we welcomed sixteen-hundred-sixty-eight students in kindergarten through grade five. That's Boydin with three-hundred-forty-six, Elm with four-hundred-twenty-four, Fisher with four-hundred-forty-seven, and OPR with four-hundred-fifty-one. Teachers and staff have created welcoming classrooms and learning environments for their students. During these initial days, teachers are building strong relationships with their students, establishing expectations for their learning communities, and setting the stage for a year of learning. We are excited to embark on this journey of rigorous learning with all of our elementary students. This year, we are fortunate to have two new adjustment counselors added to our elementary staff. Katie Aces splits her time between Boydin and OPR, while Carly White services Fisher and Elm. These counselors will enhance the social-emotional learning, professional development, and support. At the elementary level, we're working with students, teachers, and families. We're thankful for the support from the school committee to make these positions possible as well. Additionally, we've doubled our digital learning coach positions by increasing to one at each of the schools. The DLCs work closely with teachers to move the integration of technology and instruction ahead, while introducing cutting-edge methods that engage students and deepen learning. We're looking forward to an excellent year, and we'll be sure to communicate the positive aspects of these positions and on student achievement throughout the year. I'd like to introduce Elm Street Principal, Mrs. Rosero.
Thank you, Mr. Barner.
Good evening.
Hi, Carrie.
So as you have previously heard from Assistant Superintendent Han, all four elementary schools, grades K to five, have decided to implement the Lucy Cockens units of writing and reading, starting with the implementation of writing for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. To support this implementation of both writing and reading, over the next three to five years, literacy consultant Claire Landrigan, who has co-founded Teachers for Teachers, will provide professional development through job-embedded planning sessions, demonstration lessons, as well as half-day workshops for K to two and three to five. This year, the professional development focus will be on the units of writing, with the expectations that teachers will deliver two of the units of study. Elementary administrators, teachers, specialists, and ESPs have already begun this professional development, starting on August twenty-seventh, one of our first two days back to school, with the workshop that Claire Landrigan did run for us. Our focus was on packing the Lucy Cockens writing units of study and launching the first unit, which is narrative writing. This week, Claire attended site visits at each one of our elementary schools. Her goal for this visit was to teach teachers ways to bring current professional research into their daily classroom instruction, while using the units of writing as a tool to launch writers' workshop. Principals, reading specialists, and all three grade levels, K one and two, met for forty-five-minute pre-brief, forty-five-minute classroom demonstration with the students, as well as a thirty-minute debrief. Now, next week, Shannon Finley, ELA Curriculum Coordinator, who also attended with us, will now lead these same exact sessions for grades three to five in each one of the buildings. Teachers and students were engaged throughout the entire PD and are looking forward to working with Claire and Shannon and watch our students grow as writers. Any questions?
It just sounds exciting. Go ahead, Carrie.
I just want to say, when I picked up my kindergartner today, he said, "Guess what, Mama? Today, we got to all be writers." And he was really excited to talk about the story he created and that he got to tell to his buddy in class. And as a former English ELA teacher, that just makes me very happy, because too often, students are so intimidated by writing. It's very scary for them. And I think Lucy Cockens is great, because it gives students so many more opportunities for authentic writing and for them to be excited about writing. So I'm really happy to see the work that's being done, and I think it's gonna reap some tremendous benefits. So, thank you.
I agree, and I think that's exactly the way students are addressed. They're addressed as writers. "Okay, writers, next we're going to..." And even at the kindergarten level, that is, when you write, it is through pictures and storytelling, and students are really enjoying it right now. Yep. Thank you.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. And I will be providing an update on our Foundations curriculum. The kindergarten and first-grade teachers are in year two of implementing the Foundations program, and second-grade teachers are utilizing Foundations for the first time this year. As you know, Foundations is a multi-sensory and systematic phonics, spelling, and handwriting program that significantly supports the state standards for reading, writing, and language. Foundations addresses concepts such as letter formation, phonological and phonemic awareness, sound mastery, phonics, vocabulary, fluency, comprehension strategies, and written composition. This year, kindergarten teachers are reporting that they are feeling very comfortable and confident with the philosophy and instructional practices of Foundations. Teachers believe that this year, they'll be able to better anticipate where and how to reteach and enhance the program to best meet the needs of their students. Grade-one teachers have also hit the ground running with their Foundations instruction this year. Teachers are commenting on the efficiency and effectiveness of their Foundations lessons, because students are entering first grade with language skills learned in Foundations and a solid understanding of the expectations and routines of the program. Grade-two teachers are in their first year of implementation, and they are familiarizing themselves with effective instructional practices and the curriculum itself, but they're finding that the students entering second grade have really helped that learning curve, because they're coming in so familiar with the program and confident in their skills. So the second-grade teachers are noticing that these students are coming in with improved decoding skills that will surely benefit them in the areas of reading and writing this year and beyond. Happy to answer any questions?
Great. Are there questions for Brian? Yes.
I had a question, just a comment. I wanted to say, at the PAC meeting last night, we had so many people that there weren't enough seats. It was amazing. So as much as I'd like to thank people who were there to hear Bill's little speech, because he did the school committee presentation, everybody was very excited to see you, so. Welcome to Fisher.
It's been a great welcome by the Fisher community, last night at the PAC meeting, tonight at the ice cream social, so we're off to a great start, so, thank you.
Glad you're enjoying it.
Thank you.
That's great.
Best cleanup course today. So in the area of mathematics this year, we're gonna be implementing a new scope and sequence K to five. Last year, the math coaches worked collaboratively to align the math curriculum with the standards and provide teachers with a comprehensive scope and sequence. They used many lessons from our current Invisions curriculum and also supplemented these lessons using other mathematical resources. This resource is available to teachers online, and in that resource is many embedded links to other resources, games, videos, to enhance their teaching. Throughout this year, teachers will be adding and collecting their resources that they use in their classroom as well, with the hope that this will be shared across district at each grade level. This year, their math coaches will be working to develop district-wide common assessments to go along with this scope and sequence, and the hats go off to the math coaches for all of their hard work, and we're really looking forward to the next steps in this journey through mathematics. In closing, talk a little bit about the custodial staff. So throughout the summer, our custodial staff was hard at work, cleaning classrooms, cafeterias, auditoriums, stripping and waxing floors, and cleaning rugs. We appreciate their efforts to make our building sparkle for our staff and students. We thank Ed Johnson and Bob Knight at OPR, Neil McCormick and Mike Brennan and Ann Josie at Elm Street, Scott Manson and Eric Goodwin at Boydin, Rick Souza and Victor Cruz at Fisher, and Brian Thomas, who splits his time between Fisher and Boydin. With the town coordinated with the DPW and the custodial staff with a variety of projects across our school that had painting classrooms, redoing floors, and replacing tiles, much of the work that you heard previous to me. Without these two groups working together, we would not have been able to have a smooth opening, so we can't thank them enough for all that they did to allow our students to come into a school ready to go. In closing, I want to thank all of you for your support leading into this school year for the elementary, and we're looking forward to a wonderful school year.
Thank you very much, Brendan. Questions or comments for Brendan? I would just say, for all of you, we made an effort to try to get to the PAC meetings this past week, and it was great. I mean, I went to all post, and the energy was just really positive, and thank you for being so welcoming of us. The whole idea is just to be clear and open with communication, and, you know, as some of us move out of the elementary grades, it's good to keep that connection, so thank you for being so.
And, you know, when I left the PAC meeting last night, I actually thought, and I know Carrie's a parent at the school as well, but I thought it was a really nice touch to the PAC meetings this year. I felt like there's often questions about things going on around the town, and I have half of the answer, maybe not even half. But I think having some good facts leading into some of the projects that are going here and working with the elementary school, you know, the elementary parents who are going to be walking possibly into these buildings soon is a key component. So I thought it was a great addition to the PAC meeting.
It was fun. It was a nice way to start.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and welcome to all of you who are new administrators. I know we still have Julie to go, but I should have started with the welcome, but, go ahead, Brendan.
And last, but certainly not least, our preschool director, Mrs. Martin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This year, the Daniel Feedy Preschool welcomed seventy-seven of Walpole's youngest learners and their families. Over the summer, we were fortunate to add a sixth teacher in addition to an educational support personnel and a second full-time speech and language therapist, allowing us to meet the needs of our children and support their social, emotional, behavioral, and academic health. At present, we have eight sessions, all taught by a passionate and dedicated group of educators who see so much potential in each and every child and come to school each day with that in mind. Over the summer, our staff took a variety of coursework, including Growth Mindset for Diverse Learners, The Challenge of Challenging Behaviors, The Trauma-Sensitive Classroom, and The LEAP curriculum that is part of the Pyramid Model, which we continue to implement this year, LEAP standing for the Learning Experiences, an alternative program for parents and preschoolers. And the Pyramid is a grant program that is, supports students through a multi-tiered system of support that we're continuing to implement this year and which helps us to focus on inclusive practices in the classroom. In addition, we will continue to expand the pilot of Foundations, which Brian spoke a little bit about. Of course, developmentally appropriate for our preschoolers, exposing them to letters and letter sounds, as developmentally appropriate, as I said. We also continue to implement, our teachers started working together as a team last year to develop training around using the Zones of Regulation, which assists students in identifying their feelings and putting them to Zones, and then to develop self-regulation skills around those. And the Zones Regulation is also something that is used at the elementary level, too, so that will carry forward as our students get older. As a new director in the position, I had a coffee hour with families last Friday, which was attended by a small group of parents and the superintendent, so thank you. In addition... In addition, Feeny hosted its, we had our first annual Welcome Back Popsicles at Preschool event this past Monday, attended by approximately twenty-plus families on our playground, which was wonderful, and so it was great to see families and siblings and parents and hear them all get to know each other, and, you know, the kids will run into each other, "This is my new best friend," that, you know, they've been with for six days, and so then the parents get to meet each other, and it's really sweet. And then this past Wednesday night, just the other night, we had our first PAC meeting of the year, which was small, but families were able to get together, share ideas, and get to know each other better. And during this meeting, you know, one parent shared with me that on the first day of school, her daughter came home from preschool, and when asked how her day went, she said, quote, "It was the best day of my life." Students are still getting to know classmates' names, learning routines, having morning circle, and play, lots and lots of play. This is how we learn at preschool, the kids learn through play. As the words of Fred Rogers, "Play is often talked about as if it were relief from serious learning, but for children, play is serious learning. Play is really the work of childhood." So, members of the school committee, I welcome you to please visit us. I guarantee it will brighten your day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, are there questions for Julie?
Thank you.
Yeah, great start.
Well, the principals have had a full week between PACs and ice cream socials and popsicle socials, so, if okay with you, that they can.
Absolutely, and welcome, seriously, welcome to all of you that are new, and we're very glad that not everybody is new, so, good news there, too.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the next item on our agenda is, we have a volunteer who's willing to serve as our representative to the Walpole Media Committee. So, just so that people understand, anybody who contributes, anybody who signs up for cable in the town, a small portion of your bill goes to fund the public access. So, the fact that we are televised is because a little bit of everybody's cable bill contributes to make cable TV happen, and it's a great opportunity for our town, but there's a committee of people that serve similar to the school committee to do the organizational tasks. And Kristin Syrek is willing to be our representative, and I don't know if you have anything you want to say about it, Kristin. I know communication is your field, so.
Yeah, communication's my field. When I was in college, it was all about television, so, now in marketing, but television is still something that's close to my heart, so when this opportunity came up, I'm more than happy to sort of put those skills to use and see what I can do to help with that program, so, happy to serve.
I think it's fantastic, and I think they made a conscious effort to call themselves the Media Committee because it is changing, and I think, I think we're lucky to have somebody with the skills that you have, willing to represent us there. For the listening audience, the headquarters of Walpole Media has moved to Walpole High School probably two years ago, I think it was, maybe.
Longer than that.
More than that?
Yeah, it was.
Three?
It was there before I started, so it had to be at least three years.
Okay. And, but what it does is, it gives us an opportunity to integrate some work that happens at the high school with the real-life production that happens throughout the community. So, it's a great opportunity, and we're benefiting from it tonight. We have two, two members of the, of the staff working, training and working for us, so welcome to both of you also. But, back to the important point, if, we're thrilled to have Kristin, so all we need is a motion and a second to appoint Kristin as our representative.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kristin Syrek to the Walpole Media TV Committee. I can. I'm moving to come in.
Yes, we have a motion by Mrs. Muccini, a second by Mrs. Gayotzitz. Any more questions or discussion? All those in favor, opposed, abstained, five zero zero. And thank you, Kristin. Yeah. And just so that people know, the selectmen appointed Eric Kraus and Jean Kenny recently, and the final positions will be voted on a week from tonight.
Yep, the nineteenth.
On the nineteenth. So, it's shaping up to be a great board. Okay, the next item is student activity cap.
Yes, Mr. Mike Frascha, School Business Administrator, is requesting the cap be raised on all student activity accounts, so, Mr. Frascha will explain the rationale and answer any questions.
So, enclosed in your packets are a list of the student activity clubs and the activities that are at each of our schools, it's in order by school. So, just a little background on student activities. Accounts are used to collect for the collection and the payment of student funds for activities such as field trips, drama clubs, productions, National Honor Society, the speech teams, and many others, as you can see on those lists. Each school has a savings account where all funds are initially deposited, and a checking account where checks are paid from, so, like a traditional checking account. Over the past five years, the amount of activity in the student activity accounts has increased substantially, and I'm here this evening to request an increase in the cap that each checking account has set. The cap acts as a line of credit to allow large checks to be issued prior to all the funds being transferred from the savings account. I'm here to request an increase in the following student activity accounts. Walpole High School, the increase would be from thirty thousand to seventy thousand. The middle school increase would be from ten thousand to fifty thousand, and at the elementary schools, it would be from six thousand to ten thousand dollars. The cap increases are a recommendation within our most recent audit report to better facilitate large payments during the busiest time of our school year. So, although the numbers sound large, you have to think about activities such as the prom, dinner dances, Canterbury Lake, the trips that the middle schools do, all these add up in a sizable way, and when the money moves, it needs to be covered, otherwise checks bounce, we can't have that happen. So, that's what the cap really does, it covers, insulates those accounts. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions for Mike? Yes, Carrie.
So, reading between the lines, Mike, it sounds like this increases the efficiency with which this process moves through your office and through the principals of the buildings, just kind of alleviates some of the headaches that come with those large purchases and making sure there's enough in the accounts.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I would just add, every once in a while, you read about a school system that has gotten themselves in trouble because they're not as fastidious as Mike's office is about tracking all of this, and it's, you know, back in the day, teachers would, like, have a whole stack of cash in their drawer when they collected field trips, and it's just not done that way any longer, and it's really important to be very careful with people's money, and I think that's what you're trying to do also, so, I think it's super important for us to recognize how important it is to support what your office is recommending.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, can we vote the three increases, can we vote an increase to the student activity account caps, or do you want three individual votes?
I think three individual would be good.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Nope. So, I need a motion for the high school cap, please.
I'll make a motion to raise the high school student activity cap from thirty thousand dollars to seventy thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Denizio, a second by Mrs. Syrek. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, abstained, five zero zero. You're up, Carrie.
I will make a motion to increase the student activity cap at the middle schools from ten thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Again, we have a motion by Mrs. Denizio, a second by Mrs. Syrek. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
And lastly, I'll make a motion to increase the student activity cap at the elementary schools from six thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Again, a motion by Mrs. Denizio, a second by Mrs. Syrek. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thanks for staying on top of it, Mike, and sorry you've had a long week.
I'll stick around.
He's not done yet.
Mrs. Muccini.
Sorry, can I go back to number two under New Business for a minute, Walpole Media?
Sure.
You mentioned an election next Thursday.
Yes.
Is that open to the, that's open to the public, right?
Yes.
If you are, you have to have a bill.
You have to be a cable subscriber.
You're a cable subscriber.
I just felt like we should mention that.
That's a good point.
Yep. It's open to the public, you have to have a cable subscription from Comcast, and you bring it with you to prove, but people can be involved in this voting, it's not just about certain committees.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
It's open to the public.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, you're right, that's a good point. I believe it's a seven-person board, or a five, I don't, it's an odd number, it's either five or seven, and we appoint a person, the Board of Selectmen appoints two people, and the remaining people, I think it's a seven-person board, because some people are in their mid-cycle.
Yep.
But, I believe that there will be two people elected next Thursday night.
Right, and as long as you have a cable bill.
Correct.
You can vote.
And it would happen at Walpole High School in the media, in the Walpole Media office, which is the, what people at the high school would refer to as the gym entrance.
Yep.
Near the health room on the, if you're facing the building, it's the left-hand side at the bottom.
Door number nine.
Door number nine.
The truck is usually there, so it's.
Even better. Thank you, Patrick. No, that's a good point, Beth. Thank you. And now, Mr. Buckley is here, so, Mr. Buckley, we just finished the student activity cap, so we're on old business.
Excellent, old business. Appointment of the Sheriff's Task Force. At a previous school committee meeting, a discussion was held with respect to a new task force being established by Norfolk County Sheriff Jerry Dermott. The attached letter we sent to the committee, I could send this afternoon a little further information, I think. The sound of it is, it looks like a kind of a working group as we've had in the past, on other issues, just to kind of talk about best practices around substance abuse, student safety, and the like. The sheriff would like to get it off the ground fairly soon, so, if there's a member present this evening who would be interested, we can appoint that person, and it was, it seems like this working group may be standing in the future, so there might be opportunities to kind of cycle through if other people would be interested. They did say that some of the initial meetings may be mid-afternoon or during the day, and then they may move to an evening meeting, so that they weigh in, but thoughts from the committee? Scalavio.
It's one of those areas that I'm very interested in, and I talked with Mrs. Muccini about the potential of going to the first meeting together.
That'll be good.
And because I do think they're just trying to get something off the ground, and, you know, I don't know if anybody else is interested, but, you know, I'm definitely interested.
Jen, more meetings, anyway?
I just signed up for more meetings, so I'm just gonna let somebody else take it.
Nancy can attend, I'm happy to step in if I can, especially if it's during the day, nighttime's a little busy.
Excellent. Great, we'll send you both. Do you want to formalize it with a vote, perhaps? Do I have a motion for someone? To, I'll appoint two.
Okay, sure. I'll make a motion to appoint Mrs. Muccini, Beth Muccini and Nancy Gallivan, to the Norfolk County Sheriff's Task Force on Juvenile Substance Abuse and Mental Health. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Denizio, second by Mrs. Syrek. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, six zero zero. Thank you. Moving right along, I'm glad to see all the heavy stuff was done before I got here. Superintendent's report.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, just giving an update on some communication and collaboration, as you know, we've completed the first ten days of school, actually had to go over that again and say it's been ten days. As part of my entry plan, I've met with various stakeholders and will continue to conduct these meetings throughout the year. Last week, I was able to attend some of the ice cream socials, was able to get to Elm and OPR, it was unbelievable turnouts at these socials. Fisher was today, but unfortunately I had to attend my son's open house. I did say hello to Mark Breen, who was there, and it was great to meet some of our preschool parents, as Julie Martin mentioned, at the Feeny Preschool Coffee Hour, and to see some new faces. Some of the PAC meetings this week, fortunately able to get to Johnson and Boydun, they were, like I said, well-attended, everybody said this, and really productive discussions, and I really encourage families, I know that it's a busy time, if they can attend, it's very informative, and it's a great, great bonding groups. I'm always impressed with the dedication of our parents and support of our children in our schools. I also want to thank the school committee for attending as well. I appreciate the work that you continue to do for Two Way Communication and provide valuable information regarding our government affairs. I'll be going out to all the schools on a rotating basis to meet with principals, discuss our goals and progress, and visit classrooms. I started this week at Elm and Feeny. I'm just really also impressed by how many names the principals already know with the ten days in school, and if you ever, like I said, are having a rough day, go down to that preschool, it was very therapeutic to play in the sandbox with Emily, so I love that. And also, Bill Hahn has been going out to the schools as well, he's been observing and supporting each new staff member, so I really appreciate and thank him for doing that, because I know that's a lot of time and effort, but we value the importance of that. As was mentioned by the middle school principals with, through the coalition, that they'll be holding the presentation on Screenagers on October third, again, seven o'clock at Johnson Middle School. Officer Hart will be having a parent presentation on Critical Incident Response, A Parent's Guide to School Safety. The date is now set, it's been confirmed as of today, on October fifteenth, seven o'clock at Walpole High School. As you know, all the children have been participating in Critical Incident Response assemblies through the high school and the middle school, and they are going to the elementary schools in the next couple of weeks, so we thought it would be beneficial to have a parent presentation and informational session. I'm also in talks with Officer Hart to see if it's possible to videotape as well, because we know that it can be busy, parents' time, and if, that we're able to tape it and they're able to watch it at another time, so we're working on that. In terms of our leadership goals, our large focus of our leadership retreat, as you know, is on analyzing components of the strategic plan and identifying priority initiatives. We have already begun the implementation of these goals and objectives, which align with our four goals of the strategic plan, which is to provide an engaging curriculum, differentiating instruction, and ongoing assessments for our students to foster and strengthen the social and emotional well-being of our school and community, to develop thoughtful, responsible, and engaged citizens, and to ensure that our facilities and resources support student learning and well-being. So, just for example, some of our specific goals and objectives that focus on the following that we have been working on, analyzing student data, including identification of digital tools that will provide student learning benchmarks in the areas of math and literacy, and I think you've heard that tonight already from our elementary principals, assessing the school climate needs, and auditing our current SEL practices, and we're creating a district-wide SEL steering committee to help establish consistent, district-wide understanding of social, emotional learning and the competencies. And within that, the charge of that committee is going to create a climate survey, so that we have a consistent survey amongst all of the schools in the district. And then, finally, creating a threat assessment, safety protocol, and a team to ensure the timeliness of response and safety of all students and staff in our school environment. So, what this really does, it establishes the systematic procedure for assessment and intervention, so it's really a proactive measure instead of reactive. I mean, we have the crisis plans in place, and that's great, but that's a reactive measure, this is a proactive measure to help our students and staff feel safe. So, we'll update you on our goals throughout the year. In terms of our Fails, Leach, Rogers, and Cundy Scholarship, please be advised that the scholarship application will be available on October first through Thursday, October twenty-ninth. The application can be found on the district website or at the superintendent's office, and there's a copy of the application also that's in your packets. In terms of a capital update, as you remember, on July seventeenth. In terms of a capital update, as you remember, on July seventeenth, school committee voted to approve the fall town meeting capital request in the amount of five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And just quickly, it was fifty thousand for the security camera installations. It was a hundred and eighty thousand year one of year three for the technology plan, which totaled the five hundred and forty thousand. That was for, if you remember, the infrastructure and the Chromebook replacements, the four hundred thousand dollars for the Walpole High School building study, twenty-five thousand dollars for the special education van replacement, twenty-five thousand dollars for the cafeteria replacement tables and fifteen thousand dollars for the chair and desk replacement system-wide. Since then, we presented our requests to the Capitol Committee on August twentieth. The Capitol met, um, on September third to finalize their recommendations and vote. And they voted unanimously to approve the fifty thousand dollars for the security camera installations, the technology plan for, for three years, the infrastructure and the Chromebook replacements and also the four hundred thousand dollars for the Walpole High School building study. They did not approve items four through six, was the van replacement, the cafeteria table replacement and the chair and desk replacement system-wide. And the Capitol Budget Committee will then present to the Finance Committee on Monday, September sixteenth. And fi- um, also, just to update you on the enrollment, um, welcome three thousand seven hundred and fifty-three students into the Walpole Pub- uh, the Walpole Public School System. Class sizes at the elementary schools are looking good. The class averages in all grades, um, are approximately, they're twenty. Grade one has a class average of twenty, grade two has a class average of twenty-one. Elm has a little more, it's, uh, twenty-four, but we, uh, added instructional support in those classrooms to help. Um, grade three, four and five are all, all twenty. Um, and then also, your kindergarten classes, they range from seventeen to twenty students, there's fifteen classes, as I mentioned, I think at the last school committee meeting, we added, needed to add a kindergarten teacher at OPR to keep the class sizes under, um, twenty-two and we were able to do that. Um, our total full-day kindergarten is two hundred and sixty-five students and half-day, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but eleven, will bring our total to two seventy-six. And eight families, um, so far have benefited from the sliding scale and we feel that opening up that sk- sliding scale has really, um, shifted people to full day. And we found that there are some families out there for half-day and, and they choose to do that for, for their own reasons and their personal reasons and they, they have, um, been able to tell us that. So that's been, um, that's been good. I think it's been, been really beneficial. Um, the middle school, the majority, average class size is twenty-five. You know, there are some exceptions depending on, um, accelerated classes can tend to be a bit higher, um, and some exploratories due to scheduling. Um, and then like, for example, at Bird, there's a French class of thirty, but there's only one French class and that's what happens when you have the two middle schools with the, with the singletons. Um, there's a reminder that the building tours are scheduled for Tuesday, the seventeenth at six-thirty and Friday, the twentieth at eight-thirty. We'll start at Walpole High School, then move to Bird and then we'll move to Elm and then any other buildings that, that people, um, may want to go and see. During these walkthroughs, we usually point out recent capital improvements, that's why we selected Elm, as well as offer an opportunity for committee members to experience current conditions at our schools. And that is the superintendent's report.
Just one quick comment on the, on the capital piece, just wanted to acknowledge and thank both you, Mr. Fisher, Mrs. Galavan, um, Ms. Denizio for staying quite late at the end of their capital, um, uh, meeting for that. I think it, it's, it's a good thing that whenever we have meetings like this, there's, we're always well-represented as a, a school department, uh, which isn't always the case with some of the other, uh, kind of boards and committees, so it's, it's great to have a lot of us there to, to give a, a number of, kind of, to flesh out some of the questions that come up. And I just wanted to thank you. I know it was a late night, right around the start of school and Carrie, you had s- started school the next day, so.
I, I do, I think it's important to be there to answer questions and make sure, because we can each bring something to the table and we'll be at, um, the Finance Committee meeting on Monday, right, Mike?
Yep.
All right.
Questions to the superintendent?
Not a question, but the kindergarten numbers are awesome. Um, and I know it was a little bit of work to set up slide, the sliding scale processes and Mary was involved with a lot of that too, so thank you all for those efforts because they're gonna, um, I think, make a huge impact for those families. So thank you.
I think one other point of comparison that I just came across before I came down was last year, similar numbers overall. Last year we had twenty-two half-day students and this year we have eleven, so you can see the drop off. Cut it in half, so.
Thanks a lot, please.
Hmm.
It's great, thanks for that number.
For the questions or comments, for Bridget, if we could just maybe, um, your two sheets of notes on that, I know s- I saw people feverishly writing.
I will copy them, get them too.
Send them to the committee. Awesome. Excellent, moving on. Uh, next order of business is subcommittee activity? A second reading of revised.
Yes. So attached for the second reading is the policy JLC regarding the Student Health Services and Regulations. And then you also have attached summary that's provided by Kathy Garbin, who is our school nurse leader. So Kathy is here to present and answer any questions that you may have about this policy.
Come on down. I know, I was thinking about it. But the podium is nicer.
Quick exit. It is, the whole room looks absolutely fabulous. So, um, I wanted to give you a little background on how this policy came to be and, and why I was, um, reviewing it. The original reason for the policy change was because a question was asked by Lynn Rowan regarding a, um, a form she was making for parents to, um, sign that would go into Aspen and X two. And it would be, uh, highlight any medical concerns, it would provide, um, permission for treatment and, um, to transport to a hospital. And the question came up, um, did somebody have to sign it every year? Cause that's been our, our typical, we always have the parent sign and that is what I was familiar with, with other districts. So I had stated that I really wasn't sure if legally if we could do it, it wouldn't, you know, make sense, have a parent sign it once and then update it as needed if they wanted to withdraw permission or if they were gonna add any medical concerns. So, um, it was sent over to Dan Brown and he reviewed it and he said there were no, um, reasons that we couldn't, according to state regulations, but our own school committee policy said that it had to be done annually, so that's how we ended up reviewing it. That was the, the reason for doing that. So, uh, on, you probably got this draft form with all the little scrapes. So, um, the first couple of ones were just little typos, um, helpful to a healthy environment and it said medial, so should've been medical. Um, and then the next part, under Procedures for Emergency at School, originally it stated school personnel would give quote-unquote "only emergency care" to students, so realistically we want our nursing staff to be able to care for not just the, um, students, but staff and volunteers as well and any visitors who might be coming in. Um, and that's what's currently in practice, so this just, um, stated the way it is, we'll make it, uh, possible for that. So it says, um, "School, uh, medical, or we could say nursing personnel, whichever you prefer, shall give emergen- shall give emergency care to students, staff, volunteers and visitors who become ill or injured on school property, buses or while under school supervision." So that just kind of clarifies that. And then the next paragraph was where the statement was, it said each year, so we took that out. Um, and I changed it to indicate the parent guardian will notify us upon entrance to the school district and then add a line indicating they would update as needed, um, if they changed their mind. The old policy also indicated that the parent would tell us where their child should be transported and realistically EMS can only transport to the nearest hospital except for unique situations, um, like a med flight or a specific illness that's already been, um, that requires specialized care at children and that's usually at a physician re- request and the parents have already worked that out with EMS and the school nurses would be, um, would know about that, so, um, I changed the paragraph to read and mostly it also just said parent, it didn't have guardian in it at the time. So I put, "A parent or guardian shall supply health information about the child, including any medical conditions, allergies or other specific medical needs when the student enters the Walp- Walpole Public Schools. A parent or guardian must also indicate whether or not they give permission for their child to be treated in an emergency as well as transported to a hospital when necessary for further cor- care. In addition, a parent or guardian will provide the names, address, name, address and phone number of family members, friends and/or a neighbor to be contacted in case the parent or guardian is not available. The information provided will be updated by the parent or guardian when necessary and a new signature will be required at that time." So I thought that would cover us for just having it done one time in accordance with what Dan had said. And then I wasn't sure if we needed age of a majority because technically if there's an eighteen-year-old being treated at the high school, they can refuse transport at that time, so, but I do know we have it elsewhere in the.
Um, the emergency contact piece of things, um, if we only have parents fill it out once, um, I almost wonder if it might be beneficial to do that periodically because, you know, people move, um, your kids are friends with different people. Um, I, I just wonder, you know, if the same person that you pick in kindergarten, you know, if your child's in elementary for six years, is gonna be the person you want to pick your kid up in fifth grade? So I just wanted to give that some consideration.
I, this particular, yeah, this particular form, it's this, I guess it's assumed that parents are reviewing every year because they have to review their contact information on the parent portal and the X two Aspen. So I, I guess there was an assumption that they would review this and update it if they were changing who their emergency contacts would be. But whatever, whatever the committee prefers, obviously, whatever works best.
Yeah, if people are doing it, I just remember when it came home.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Recently and, you know.
So last year, they had, they had tried to go to all online and then we had an incident where we couldn't print the actual page. There was a glitch and only page one of the document would print and page two couldn't in, 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 in the situation, it was straightened out, but in the moment it couldn't be and the, uh, EMS needed the permission to treat it, to take it to the hospital so that the, um, hospital would be able to start treatment. But it, fortunately, it, it worked out fine. The parent was able to get there in timely fashion, there wasn't any, any problem with it, but I think that's what started the ball rolling, to try to get something that would be a one-page that would be printed out and handed as the EMS was going. But, you know, I, I agree, if, if parents don't go in and change it, then there, there will be old numbers.
Yeah, and then you might not be able to reach somebody that would be able to pick the kid up.
Can I ask a clarifying question around this though? If, if it is changed next to the contacts, is it default change to this?
That's my question too.
I bet Lynn Rowan could do that, cause she can do pretty much anything. So, yeah.
I think it does.
The contact.
If they changed the contact, it would default in it.
Yeah, there's no, there's not a separate, at least when you're accessing X two, like a separate emerg- like emergency procedure contact list that.
No, that she was developing this specifically.
Yeah.
For that, this situation to have an extra piece.
And it's gonna pull from that, the contact database.
The parents are gonna fill it out, so if they, I guess if they put their emergency contact and they change it in one place, I would, I think she could probably make it be the default, whoever the emergency contact was. And, and update the parent's phone numbers and everything else too, because sometimes we find that, you know, a, a number hasn't been updated and, and it's.
Muccini.
Does everybody have access to, do you find that everybody goes in and doesn't have access to a computer or is there a way to make sure that happens if we went that way?
Um, I, uh, the nurses don't fill out that end of it, we just do the health portal, so, um, we, we talk to parents usually one-on-one when we're inputting information, but, um, I haven't heard that they don't. Um, we used to have a running list at each school of parents that required hard copies of anything that went home, but we haven't, I haven't personally been, heard of anything recently where a parent needed that, because I think a lot of people, at the very least, have a smartphone, so. But again, that's another time when you would want.
Just make sure we have everybody there.
Yeah, we could, I wonder if there's a way to run a list to make sure that everybody's signed off on it. The next piece, I just changed, um, a little bit. Uh, it said paramedic unit, so I changed that to read the EMS services and I was just gonna say the emergency card. We used to have parents fill out every year two cards, you might recall, one was for the office, one was for the nurse's office and, and about ten lines and, uh, we kept them in a little, um, like file box. So, um, we changed, I changed that to say, um, medical profile because it's, that's what's up on, on X two Aspen. Um, and then I did add there the information that the student would go to the nearest hospital because of what I just explained, um, except for the unique situations. And then the information that was in red, which came out not quite legible on mine, but it said, I didn't really understand what it was referring to, so I will read it to you and then tell you why, that's why I got rid of it. Information relative to not permitting the administration of any form of medicine or drugs to students without written approval of parents, guardians, students who have reached the age of eighteen. Requests made by parents for such administration of medications shall be reviewed by the principal or designee. So I, I really didn't know where that came from. By law, there's, we have, we have under, um, JLCD, like a three-page medication administration policy that we follow and the law is that you have to have a doctor's order and a parent sign signature before you give anything. So I, that's why I just took it out because I didn't know what it was referring to. Did, did Dan review that? He reviewed the whole thing, he didn't, he just, he was looking for anything that referred to when they would have to sign off, but he, I assume he read the whole policy.
The parent has to sign off.
Mrs. Galavan.
That's my question too, is, I, I have no idea what this means, but I think that, that I, I would feel comfortable only after Dan gave a serious look at the, at the whole thing, because I don't know.
And he has a copy.
Okay. But are we talking about doing the final vote tonight?
No, we don't have to do the final vote tonight. It's just to get, for Kathy to give you clarification.
Gotcha, okay.
It might be good too, just to, to circle back with Lynn and, and make sure we know that everything can, can fold over from.
Yeah, I, I could, um, I could forward this form, um, that she had. I, I think you were on that chain too, Bridget, but I, I'll find it and forward it out again.
What we're talking about there, Kathy, is specifically would the emergency contact information default?
Right, oh, okay.
So if, if the parent changes it once, does it automatically show up on the health form?
Okay, I will ask her that. And where this said age of majority, I wasn't sure if this was dropped in recently when everything was changed. But I, again, I didn't know what.
I can say it wasn't, wasn't.
Oh, okay.
I remember, you know, that we talked about the age of majority, but we don't, didn't talk about it specific to this policy.
Yeah, it just, it, it, it just seemed like it was in an odd place for, for it to begin with, so. And then there were three sentences, um, provisions for reporting all accidents, cases of injury or illness to the principal. Provisions shall be made, um, in parentheses, "All cases of injury or illness involving possible legal or public relations implications," parentheses, "for reporting such to the appropriate executive director of education immediately. Prompt reporting by teachers to the principal or designee any accident or serious illness and such reports will be filed with the business office and head nurse." So, um, what I changed that to say was to just, again, what is actually happening? So, "In the event of serious injury or illness, the nurse or educator, parentheses, 'When the injury or illness occurs after regular school hours or outside the school campus,'" parentheses, "will notify the school principal or his or her designee and the school nurse leader. For injuries or illness that occur at the extended day program, the staff member will notify the extended day director, who will notify the principal and the school nurse leader. The principal or his or her designee will notify the superintendent or his or her designee about the incident." So that's what happens now and, um, then I added, "Incident reports will be sent to the superintendent's office within twenty-four hours of the incident. One incident report will be kept in the business office and one in the school nurse's office." And then Dan had attached two more, the student illness or injury, there was nothing wrong with that piece, there was no errors or anything. And then he, the, he included file EBV, first aid was attached to the document I received to look at. So, um, it's, it said in the first paragraph that, um, "If an accident or sudden illness occurs, school personnel will administer first aid and if warranted, will call the school physician." That, I, I, I think that hasn't probably happened in fifty years because obviously we'll call emergency medical services, so we just changed that for transport to the hospital. First aid is defined as the immediate and temporary care given in case of an accident or sudden illness which enables the child to be taken safely home or to a physician." And then I added, "Including transport to a hospital for care," for that piece. And then just on the very last, on number five, I said that, um, it, it again spoke it, it again spoke about what the report would be, and it said, "The teacher or other staff member to whom a child is responsible at the time and accident occurs will make out a report on an official form providing details about the accident. This will be required for every accident for which first aid is given." And I said, "In addition, if the student is seen by the school nurse, a health incident report will be written by the school nurse." So there's the incident report that if the child's with a staff member by themselves or on their field trip, there's a specific form that's filled out. But if something happens in this school nurse's room, and it's a, you know, fairly critical instance, an actual report documenting everything that was done for care is actually what is printed out and sent to the superintendent's office. So it's, it's a little more complete, obviously, so I just added that. And I, um, added number, um, seven, seven, to also reflect what is, what's in reality is happening right now. "All injuries or sudden illness involving a visitor will be reported to the superintendent or his or her designee as soon as possible, and a written report will be forwarded to the superintendent's office within twenty-four hours." Because again, if we see a visitor, we wanna, that, that report would always go. We've had people fall on steps and stuff like that. I think a grandparent fainted at graduation last summer, or last June, so things like that generate reports.
So we'll take a look at the, the change of address default, and then look at the, what's in red, and then bring that back, and then hopefully by the next school committee meeting, it'll be ready for a vote.
Cool. Mrs. Galavan.
Yeah, I would just say, ask Ja- Dan to review the whole thing.
Yep.
And while Kathy's here, can I ask just one other question? I, I was thinking about the fact that we now have defibrillators, um, in every one of the schools, and in a few other, other places, can you just talk a little bit about where they are and what the expectation there is?
It'd be one of the next policies that's coming to the
Thank you.
Subcommittee, the update. So, um, the high school has four inside the high school, and they have one on Turco Field that has a, um, a specialized cabinet that has a fan that blows either hot or cold, depending on the temperature, to keep it in a good space, it has, the pads have to be kept at a certain, uh, temperature along with the battery to work effectively. The athletic trainer also carries one with her whenever she goes offsite. And then every school has, well, every school but Boydin has two at this point. Bird and Johnson's, their second ones, are on their fields. But every other school has two as well, just the size, like, so for old posts, there's one in the lobby, but there's one down next to the gym as well, because of the size, and Fisher has one, um, at the front as well, and then one down next to the lower gym, because again, the size. So Boydin is the only one that doesn't, but we think we have a solution. Each year we try to scramble some more. Um, we're not using Ellis Field anymore, and we had bought a portable one to go with coaches that were using, I think it was just the freshman. It's a freshman and JV soccer, we're using, uh, the girls at least, were using Ellis Field, so they were carrying the, um, portable one. So it, it's not any different than any of the other ones we use, we just have to buy a wall, a, um, wall cabinet to mount it in. So we're gonna, now that Ellis Field is not being used any longer, so we're gonna send it over to Boydin, and then every school will have at least two, which will be great, because Boydin needs one down next to the gym.
Ms. Jean.
My daughter was practicing at Ellis Field this week.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, it's not, yeah, I would say it's not, so her
Freshman soccer, but the girls are practicing there, so, and they have that all summer.
Their coach should have one with them then, if they're, so, why did we hear that they?
So we were told that they, when I spoke to Ron last, we weren't going to use Ellis Field, because the timing wasn't gonna work out.
That's where every practice has been, so.
So we'll need to make sure that it stays there.
If that's the case, we'll leave it there, but it's still there.
Yeah, it's still there then, well, I'll go back to looking for grants for another, one more AEG.
Ms. Galavan.
But that's a great improvement, to have as many as we have in the district right now, considering most of them have come through fundraising or grants or donations. That's, that's a tremendous, um, credit to the community, so that, that's great. So, um, you were talking about the elementary schools and the middle school. At the high school, is there one when you first walk into the building?
Yes, that, that column right in the middle of the lobby, it's on the backside.
I just think it's important for people to know, how about Turco Field, if they needed one, where on the field is it?
Between the forty and fifty yard line on the fence on the, um, home side.
On the side that has the big stands?
Yeah, the big dangers, yeah.
Near the forty to fifty yard line?
Right, and then there's one right outside the cafeteria, one outside, um, it's the auditorium, but it's the, uh, long hallway going down into, um, the math area. So it's just around the door there, there's an evacuation chair, as well as the AEG
Great.
Is there, and then, oh, down, one outside the, um, athletic trainer's office. So if she's not available, if she's out, there's one there that somebody can grab.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Other questions, not since we have you here? Excellent, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Warrants, someone like to take the warrants?
Well, can I, before we do that, can I go to
Oh, absolutely.
Legislative Subcommittee?
Sure.
It wasn't on the list, but I just wanted to talk about, I know the Board of Selectmen has been contacted by, uh, school committee members from, I believe it's somewhere in the North Shore, about some concerns related to potential change of the funding formula at the state level. And essentially, the, this has been sort of an ongoing thing, that's been going on for a good five or six years, maybe we'll change the formula. And, um, it didn't get changed this past spring, the possibility exists, and I think a lot of people think that there's a probability that something will happen in the next year. But the, the concern, the specific concern is that if the funding formula gets adjusted upwards, there are a fair number of districts that are going to lose money in this, from the circuit breaker, because circuit breaker kicks in when the cost of a student is more than four times the foundation budget for that district. So if the foundation budget changes and gets bigger, four times that number becomes a higher threshold for circuit breaker. And I, I think the, that is potentially an unintended consequence of fixing the foundation budget formula. Long story short, I just wanted to mention it tonight because I think it's an op- I think that we have two opportunities to work with our legislators. I think one is, there's been a lot of noise statewide about the fact that the poorest districts deserve money to help close the achievement gap, which they do. But for the, the, a number of years that I've been involved in working on the funding formula, the, the three things that we've asked for is for it to be adequate, for it to be equitable, and to be reliable. And the adequacy piece means it has to be adequate for everybody. I, I would like, I would like to put an effort together to contact our legislators sooner rather than later around this, around the idea that, of the unintended consequence, but also the fact that if they're gonna pass something legislatively, they need more winners than appear to be coming forward in, in the plans that I've seen. So I, I think it, it is an opportunity to potentially draw in some of our students, because I know that we're trying to promote additional civic engagement. And in the past couple of times that we've had our legislators come to Walpole, one of the most powerful pieces, I think, has been when some students who are passionate about the topic have advocated with us. So, um, I just wanted to bring it up tonight as an idea that I think needs some more fleshing out, but, um, I think it's an important one to be on our radar screen.
Just a second.
No, 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 it
Oh, the two things without, okay.
The two things were within that, yeah.
Oh, cool. Excellent, I do, I was thinking about that, just to put professional hat on again. One of the remedies, we were, we were talking with a couple legislators the other day, was when you talk about getting dinged on circuit breaker, you don't get dinged as much if you say, change the circuit breaker law to allow for transportation to be counted in, that, that may be one possible solution to kind of, even, even if you do end up getting less reimbursement for three X, if you could count transportation, that might raise or mitigate the loss you get on, um, from having a larger per pupil expenditure. So that's, I think that's probably part of the piece of the discussion.
That was the, the premise that this, these school committee members from the North Shore were proposing, yeah.
I have an article on my desk, exactly what you're talking about.
Did we get any?
I can send it to you guys. It's, it's not a long read, and it kinda, you read it a couple of times, you really understand that whole raising of that foundation, what it does to reimbursement for circuit breaker.
Yeah.
It hurts.
Right, and, and there's in the, they're in the development stage right now. It's not like they have a firm, um, proposal where people have dug in. I, so I think now is a good time to be talking to them.
If you could send that out, that'd be great.
Thanks, Mike.
Other subcommittee, just a point of information around subcommittees, I know, uh, if you have not done so already, we're gonna start looking at a few of the other subcommittees, or we're gonna try to meet some dates of autumn set, so that's good. Um, and also I know we eliminated the budget subcommittee to make it just all of us in workshop form, and, uh, we're looking at, um, the end of this week and the beginning of next, maybe setting up a, uh, a subcommittee early in the month of October, because we have that kind of open, uh, a few weeks there, so. Um, stay tuned for a date for that, uh, very soon. Anything else on subcommittees? Citizens comments, anybody in the back? Wonderful, uh, moving on, uh, to warrants, Ms. Donizio.
I will make a motion to approve, uh, the following payroll warrant from August twenty-second, number two zero zero eight P A, for the amount listed in your packet, second.
Motion by Ms. Donizio, second, by Ms. Cyric, all is in favor, opposed, abstained, six zero zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the following accounts payroll warrants, uh, from August twenty-ninth, number two two zero 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 nine, from September fifth, number two two zero zero one zero, um, for the amounts listed in your packets, second.
Motion by Ms. Donizio, second, by Ms. Cyric, all is in favor, opposed, abstained, six zero zero.
Hi.
Someone like to take donation?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the following gifts and donations to Fisher School and Johnson Middle School from Bay State Textiles and Recycling, an amount of one hundred and eighteen dollars, to Johnson Middle School from Artsonia, uh, commissioned in the amount of one hundred and seventy dollars.
Motion by Ms. Donizio, second, by Ms. Muccini, all is in favor, opposed, abstained, six zero zero. Approval minutes? Yeah, I left mine on my desk.
Um, I will make a motion to approve the, uh, school committee meeting minutes from August twenty-ninth, second.
Motion by Ms. Donizio, second, by Ms. Muccini, all is in favor, opposed, abstained, six zero zero. Excellent.
Motion to adjourn, sorry.
All is in favor, all is abstained, six zero zero, thank you.